Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the February fifteenth Board of Education meeting. At this time, we would like to turn it over to our student representative, Mikhail, for the pledge allegiance.
To the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Do we have any changes in the meeting agenda?
No changes.
Okay, thank you. All right, then with that, we will turn it back over to Mikhail for our student representative report.
All right. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me once again. You know, each Wednesday afternoon before every one of these meetings, I sit down to think about what I can talk about here, and it somehow just becomes three pages of notes. It just, it never run out of things to say. It just really like surprises me how much Word Melville accomplishes in two to three weeks alone. January thirtieth marked the beginning of the second semester of this school year. Fortunately for many seniors, this means we don't need to care about our grades as much. Sorry, guidance counselors. But sadly, I can't say the same about the other two grades. I can tell you, though, that senioritis has already hit. Trust me, you don't want to know my math grade, but Ms. Jansen knows. Us seniors now are starting to hear back from colleges and make decisions about where to go to school, so wish me and the class of twenty twenty-three luck for that. Two weeks ago, Student Government held its annual Raffles for a Cause event for Last Chance Animal Rescue, an organization that rescues endangered pets. Throughout the past month or so, Student Government members have been creating raffle baskets and selling raffle tickets to just about anyone they know for a chance to win something. On Thursday, February second, we were joined by three cute dogs and three last chance volunteers to help us draw the winners of all forty-one baskets. The event was a blast, and everyone had a great turnout. Members were constantly excited for the anticipation of seeing who's going to win the next basket. And the best part is, get ready for this, we raised four thousand two hundred and five dollars. That is the most Student Government has ever raised in its history. I'm so proud that it can happen this year of all years. Yeah, thank you. It's really amazing. Yeah. It's incredible. All the proceeds were donated to Last Chance at the meeting. It's just a great thing. The next day, Word Melville hosted its first-ever winter formal on Friday, February third. I worked tirelessly with Mr. Bernhardt and the school site-based meeting team to make this dance happen, and I'm so glad that it did. The winter formal was free of charge and open to everyone, making this also Word Melville's first-ever all-grades dance. Students had a great night enjoying a professional DJ and open-air photo booth with fifty props that was used over a hundred times, blue lighting and festive decorations throughout the gym, and two awesome food trucks. Some students, like myself, danced the night away to some of the most popular songs out there, and most students enjoyed the food trucks and socialized with their friends, and everyone had a great time overall. With the constant dancing and movement, I'd say there were closer to two hundred people at this dance, which is an awesome turnout considering it hit like eight degrees that night, so I'll take that. And the outfits everyone wore looked great. Ultimately, I'm so glad I was able to provide students with a fun dance to enjoy with their friends, and I hope it happens again next year. Following the winter formal, Word Melville's Honors Camerata Choir took a trip to Ithaca College this weekend to compete in a music composition competition. Say that three times fast. Throughout the last month, we've been working on a never-before-seen published song, and I think that we're all sincerely connected with the piece on a level we've never been before. During the competition, we got to work with the original composer of the song and perform in a competition with three other high schools from across New York. We ended up placing second, but we went home as winners in our hearts. That Friday was coincidentally also Word Melville's Got Talent, where over seventeen exemplary acts performed in front of a grand crowd of hundreds of people from all around Long Island. The audience enjoyed a variety of performances from singing to dancing to recorder duets to yo-yo playing, and Senior Evadella Pietro won with her new hit single Happy For You, streaming on Spotify. The day we came back, which was last Sunday, was none other than Super Bowl Sunday. As I got home, preparations were already underway for the party that was happening later that night. I hope everyone enjoyed watching the Super Bowl, or as people say, Rihanna's concert with a football game on the side. And even more, I hope seniors enjoy the unofficial day off that we got on Monday. I personally had a great senior skip day, sleeping in and hanging out with friends in the afternoon. The last grand event of these past weeks was Valentine's Day yesterday, and single or not, Word Melville's clubs truly did a great job helping to bring the holiday spirit into the hallways of our school, making every student feel special in their own way. The Honors Camerata Choir, once again, went all around the school, delivering singing telegrams to students as special gifts from their friends and loved ones, sorry. We sang songs ranging from "Love is an Open Door" to "I Want It That Way" to "Thinking Out Loud" by Ed Sheeran. Meanwhile, the Spanish Honor Society went around delivering roses as an anonymous gift to students, and the Cinebar Literary Magazine went around delivering heart-shaped lollipops to everyone. Overall, I'd say that Valentine's Day was celebrated by everyone in Word Melville this year thanks to the efforts of so many clubs. Of course, I'd be remiss to talk about, not to talk about, two staple items I always bring about: athletics and academics. In the world of sports, the varsity cheerleading team placed third in their nation's competition, which is incredible accomplishment. The varsity girls' basketball team and the varsity boys' swimming team won the Division II Suffolk County Championships, and Word Melville's female wrestling team participated in the New York Female Wrestling Championship for the first time ever. Congrats to these incredible athletes. And in the world of academics, I believe most, if not all, of the eleven national merit semifinals have advanced to finalist standing. Word Melville's esteemed science Olympia team placed first in the Eastern Long Island Regional. Word Melville's academic challenges club placed first in the Brookhaven National Lab Regional and is going on to nationals. Five student artists received honors in the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, and four students from Word Melville's math team won an outstanding designation in the International High School Mathematical Contest. This designation is only given to four teams in the country, and one of them happened to be Word Melville. So congrats to these stellar scholars. Before I wrap up, I'd like to say that Student Government is hosting Word Melville's second Battle of the Classes this April since before COVID. Students should get ready for a thrilling week full of contests, trivia, and spirit weeks between grades that end in an afternoon full of fun and exhilarating games. I'm so excited for this to become a huge event in the future. That's all I have to say for today. Thank you.
Really? That's all? Thank you. We always appreciate it. Thank you so much. Yes, of course, he's going to go home and study.
I'm a senior.
All right, Dr. Scanlon, would you like to introduce the next?
Yes, so our presentation is Seeding is on the Guidance Program, and our Executive Director for Community Partnerships is Ms. Connolly.
It's always so hard to follow you, Mikhail. Good evening, Board of Education and Central Office Administration. Thank you for asking us to present tonight on the K-12 Guidance Department here in Three Village. My name is Erin Connolly, and I'm the Executive Director of Student and Community Services, and I supervise the Guidance Department. Tonight, we'll be presenting on our elementary, junior high, academy, and high school programs. You will hear a common theme during our presentation regarding the department's support of our students socially and emotionally, academically, and how we support the preparation of post-secondary planning. School counselors have a large role in our schools. They are typically the first person parents reach out to when they have a question. For example, what clubs are offered? How do I set up my lunch account? What electives can my child take? Can you help my child open their locker? My child is having difficulty making friends. Can you help my child support a social connection? Oh, and the big one, can you help get my child into college? School counselors connect each aspect of a school district. They connect families, students, administrators, teachers, and the community. As you can see behind me on the slide, the interlocking rings. The role of the guidance counselor is threefold: supporting academic need, social-emotional need, and assisting students and families in preparation for post-high school planning. Each of these rings layer and intertwine with each other, emphasizing the importance they all play equally. One is not greater than the other, and in actuality, each are essential to ensuring the success of the others. I would like to introduce the counselors at each level. I'm going to ask them to stand at the end. At the high school, our chairperson, Nathan Jane. Our counselors at Word Melville, Jessica Ennis, Arianna Aston, Allison Dinkle, James Sheridan, Leah Jansen, Michelle Walker, Christine Mirabella, Walter Olson, Kimberly Halloran, and Jennifer Shepherd. At Jolinas Junior High School, our lead counselor, Anthony DiTaro, Lori Eisenhardt, Nicole Indelaccato, and Erin Anziano. At Murphy, our lead counselor, Amy Poulos, Sarah Abadi, Brian Tretter, and Rebecca Keller. At the Three Village Academy, Darlene Ryan, and our elementary counselor, Caitlin Dibella. Could you all please stand up for those of you who are here? Thank you. As school counselors, our mission is to support teachers, administrators, parents, and the community in preparing all Three Village students for their, to achieve their fullest potential by providing them with a safe, nurturing environment that will enhance their cognitive, career, and social-emotional development. Our counselor ratios hover around a hundred and fifty students per counselor at the high school, a hundred and seventy students per counselor in each junior high school, and approximately four hundred and twenty per counselor in the elementary school. The ASCA School Counselor Professional Standards and Competencies outline the mindsets and behaviors that school counselors need to meet the rigorous demands of the school counselor profession and for the needs of grades pre-K through twelve. Historically, the term "guidance counselor" was referred to counselors working in schools. This term has evolved to "school counselors" as the scope of the duties have changed and evolved. Guidance counselors were seen as reactive and served an ancillary role to the school improvement process. It was determined in nineteen ninety that the term "guidance counselor" no longer encompassed the broad scope of work done by professionals in the school. School counselors are proactive, creative in program development, impact measurement via achievement, attendance, behavior data, and are essential in school improvement process, and are viewed as school leaders. While ASCA does not define, does not view the terms interchangeably between guidance counselors and school counselors, over the years, it's been hard to break the habit. Before I introduce our two former elementary counselors to discuss the elementary program, I would like to share the New York State requirement for elementary guidance. For students in grades K through five, the program should be designed by a certified school counselor in coordination with teaching staff and appropriate pupil personnel service providers to prepare students to participate effectively in their educational programs, providing college and career information, assisting students with changes to academic success such as attendance or behavioral concerns, and making referrals to appropriate professionals for targeted supports. It's important to note that the state requires that all students in grades K through five have access to a school counselor. If our school configuration were to change in the future, the district would still need to provide guidance services at the elementary level. I would now like to introduce Sarah Abadi and Rebecca Keller to discuss the elementary program.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Abadi.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Keller.
We are currently school counselors at Murphy Junior High. However, we started our Three Village careers as the elementary school counselors in sixth grade in all five elementary schools. We are speaking on behalf of the current sixth-grade counselor, Caitlin Dibella, as she could not be here tonight.
Our district has a comprehensive school counseling program at the elementary school that's based off of the ASCA national model. The ASCA national model focuses on three domains, so that's academic success, career in college readiness, and personal and social development. As school counselors at the elementary school, we get the opportunity to work with students through indirect and direct services, really with the goal of helping them to become successful lifelong learners.
The majority of the programs focuses on in-school classroom lessons in these three categories. Some examples include time management, study skills, organization, peer pressure, stress and anxiety management, conflict resolution, possible pathways after high school, resume building, employability skills, and many more.
In addition, there is a large focus on the transition to the junior high school, talking about scheduling, talking about how to open up a locker, or what it takes to be successful as a junior high student. We also get to have conversations with students about what it takes to be successful after Word Melville through programs like College and Career Day.
The elementary counselor also has the opportunity to support students through individual and group counseling. We work closely with social workers and psychologists to support students, parents, guardians, in a variety of ways.
So overall, the main mission of the program is to help foster a positive academic environment for all students where they understand their support systems, how to ask for help when needed, and thrive as Three Member, as Three Village community members. So we thank you for letting us speak today.
Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Amy Poulos, Lead Counselor at Murphy Junior High School. Thank you to our team tonight for being here. It means a lot for your support. So, junior high school is truly a time, a time of transition for our students. Counselors spend these years working with students who are facing academic, social, and emotional changes. There truly will never be a greater change in a student's academic career than moving from an elementary school setting to a junior high school. Developmentally, these years are full of transformation, challenges, and choices. Social situations, along with the ever-changing emotions of an adolescent, can be incredibly overwhelming for our students. We believe in helping students feel comfortable and safe through all junior high school transitions. Counselors work to connect with students through various programs and counseling sessions. We are sure to meet with students at every level each year. Programming for seventh and ninth grade students is done through individual transitional meetings. Eighth-grade students and their families are invited to a four-year plan meeting to begin discussion on high school, college, and careers. Our counselors keep the same alphabet of students, which allows us to develop meaningful relationships, not only with students, but also with their families. This shared connection is an essential part of the role that we play in supporting our students. Additionally, you can find junior high school counselors supporting students through groups and classroom presentations. Through school initiatives like Unity Day and P.S. I Love You Day, counselors help students find ways to connect with peers as well as the school community. Many of the counselors on our staff also advise clubs and are part of committees that allow us to meet and get to know students in a different way. Our counselors at the junior high school are always coming up with new and creative ways to support, encourage, and engage our students. Thank you.
So my name is Anthony DiTaro. My name is Anthony DiTaro, and I'm the guidance counselor at Jolene's Junior High School. So, what Amy pointed out, the multiple times that we have access with students and we have transition times that we meet with these students in 6th grade or 7th grade, 7th grade to go to 8th grade, 8th grade to go to 9th grade, and then 9th grade to go to high school. So we have four years that we transition students. Within those years, we have some major themes that we try to promote, and I'm going to reshuffle those three and start with self-advocacy. We really try, and we work with not only our students but our parents, to promote students to be able to self-advocate for themselves. So we have seen students take major risks to do that, and we promote that in many of our programs. And one of our programs that we do that is within the four-year plan program, where students are really only a year and a half into their tenure with us, and they end up leaving by being able to promote themselves in all aspects of their life. So self-advocacy is one of the things that takes any learner and takes what they're doing academically and socially and takes it to a new level. So that's a big focus of ours. Involvement is the thing that we promote with students when we first start talking with them in 6th grade when we're down to the elementary schools, and encourage them to get involved. Because what we know is when students leave Jolene's Junior High School, Murphy Junior High School, and they're involved, their experience is totally different than if they work a bell-to-bell day. So involvement to us is the opportunity for students to take their involvement and turn it into opportunities, because without involvement, you don't create opportunities. And within opportunities comes the opportunity for students to develop their passions, things that they really like, things that they're genuinely and authentically involved in that gives them purpose and meaning. And when they have purpose and meaning, they end up really becoming a different person, and they enhance their experience, and they become a lot more vibrant in what they do. So those are the two themes that we target early, and we continue that ongoing conversations because we believe that with those two things, our students grow tremendously. The relationship piece, I think, is an obvious thing, but it has a lot more meaning now than it ever has before. As a guidance counselor, been here for a few years, the relationship piece of what we do has changed. It used to be the role, and I think Erin highlighted it really well, the role of a counselor used to be that we're mainly academically focused, and we did do some social-emotional work with our students. But because our caseloads were very high at the time, and now that they're somewhat manageable, our role has increased, and I don't think it's to anyone's surprise what's going on right now. Just look at the news last couple of days, and you saw a lot of that, you know, 57% of adolescents are going through crisis on their own, and then they highlight how it affects young girls even more. So our role has really changed, and you know, it used to be mainly that psychologists and the social worker had a lot of the responsibility of doing the ongoing counseling. That has totally changed. We share it. We're like a mini clinic in all of our buildings, and there's a lot going on. So our relationships that helps a student is much more tentacled than it ever has. We're working with therapists, we're working with teachers to understand what a student is going through, you know, we're asking them for their trust, that we're asking them for flexibility with a kid, and that goes a long way because when we hone our craft of relationships with parents, community, with therapists, with our teachers, with our administrators, students get that benefit. So that benefit is tremendous, and we are very passionate about what we do. And you know, I think that together, we've really turned into, you know, an asset to students because what we do is everything and anything. So that relationship building is super important to us, and... So, the Three Village Academy, the reason I reshuffled that is our relationship extends to our colleagues at the academy. And I can tell you right now, through my years that I've been here, probably the single most... The thing that had probably the biggest impact on our students is definitely the opportunity to have an academy like we have. The academy is a place where kids get a reset button. They get an opportunity to come out of their general placement and be able to go to a place that is, I'm going to say it's magical. It's unbelievable. Unless you had somebody that you know that has gone there and had the opportunity to gain their reset of who they are, it's amazing. And the academy has a smaller ratio, was built that way, so students would have more time to develop, students who are in, you know, really tough positions. But for the community, it's where your kid goes that's still part of this district, where your kid does not leave the district. That is incredible. You know, I remember when Mr. Scanlon brought it in, it was one of those programs that unless you saw it in action, unless you had a kid, it looked like a place originally that was like the place to go so you'd get out of the building and not cause, you know, difficulties. It's opposite. It's where kids grow, and there's the opportunity to always come back to whatever school they're at. It's amazing because as a community member, if it's your kid, and your kid is going to the academy, it used to be a little bit like, kind of like a possibility that they would never come back. It's the opposite. It's a reset for your kid to have the opportunity to be part of a program that works on your social-emotional growth on a small, one-to-one basis. The staff there is amazing. The program is amazing. But what we benefit from as counselors is that when it used to be that a kid almost had to burn out and then went somewhere else, like a Bosse's program or something like that, we have a program within this district that allows students to get a reset and then potentially go back to what they're doing. So we really, you know, feel that that program is invaluable, and it has done amazing work for some of our students. They come back to us, and they said without that academy, they would be lost. So it's a great program.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Jane, and I'm the chairperson of the Ward Melville Guidance Department. As my colleagues have stated previously, the theme of the interconnectedness of the role of the school counselor is evident in our high school as it is across the other schools in our district. The one area that was remained relatively constant is the academic support we provide our students. We've continued to provide support to students to assist them with reaching their full academic potential. In addition, each year, we go through a comprehensive scheduling process that involves the counselors meeting one-on-one with every student with the goal of helping prepare them to be successful both during and after high school. However, the two other areas of responsibilities have changed significantly in the past 10 years, and even more so since the onset of COVID. In terms of post-secondary counseling or college and career advisement, with the onset of the online applications, the Common Application, the many other recent changes, the college landscape has gone from a more local and regional one to a national and even international scope. The guidance staff needs to be equally equipped to talk about St. Andrews in Scotland, as they are Stony Brook University in our backyard. Since COVID, the admissions requirements at most colleges have been adjusted, sometimes in multiple ways, and seem to remain in constant flux. Now more than ever, our staff needs to keep current on every aspect of the admissions process. These constant adjustments do not seem to be settling down anytime soon. In terms of socio-emotional counseling, this focus area has changed exponentially in the last five years. As the nation is in the grips of a mental health crisis, Three Village is not immune to this trend. We saw the increase in socio-emotional issues start to trend upward approximately five to six years ago. However, COVID ended up accelerating this significantly. The counselors provide direct short-term counseling to students more frequently than ever before, as well as in our supportive role, working with students and families in finding outside referral resources. Because our department's focus on establishing strong relationships with our students and families, many reach out to their school counselor first when a socio-emotional issue arises. This happens when students feel they need direct help, or even when they see somebody else who needs support. Fortunately, we work closely with a counseling center at the high school, which houses a dedicated group of social workers and school psychologists. Together, we work hand-in-hand in providing socio-emotional support for the students and families of Ward Melville. I'd just like to add that I want to highlight the fact that I also, and I'm sure I speak for my crew here tonight, is that we feel fortunate to work in a district that understands and supports that these three core responsibilities are equally important. For instance, the socio-emotional wellness of a student can have a direct impact on that student's ability to be successful in the classroom, which in turn can impact the post-secondary options available to them. So the counselors would not be able to effectively service our students throughout their high school experience if we were not involved in each one of these different responsibilities. As you can see from this slide, many of our department's programs focus on college and career counseling or post-secondary planning. It is important to note that most of these programs listed here have been reevaluated and updated in the past two years. Part of this was due to the pandemic and our need to be more flexible in terms of how we deliver this information. One of the positive outcomes to COVID was our department's pivot to provide information and opportunities virtually. This has allowed for more students and their parents and guardians to participate in our programming as a family unit. We offer virtual options for our individual meetings, especially as it pertains to the college process, as well as our traditional evening programs. I feel blessed to have a staff that regardless of their years of service, who have been willing to make these changes for the betterment of the students and the families. The next three slides outline the department's programs based on the specific grade they are designed for. You will see many of these programs are repeated in multiple years. This is another change the department decided to implement. We all felt it was important to open up programs, such as the Virtual College Admissions Panel, which was originally designed solely for seniors who were about to apply to college, to 10th and 11th grade students and their families. It's so important for families to get information, especially as it pertains to the college admissions process, as early as possible. When we provided in-person programs, we were limited by physical space. Pivoting to virtual formats has allowed us to open up these programs to these multiple grade levels. One particular program I'd like to highlight is PEEP, or the Preferred Early Action Program. This program allows students to apply to participating colleges through an early action or early application process that is unique to students at Ward Melville. This year, for the class of 2023, 13 colleges participated in this program, from local schools such as Adelphi and Stony Brook University, which by the way, does not have an early action option for other students, to schools much further away, such as SUNY Geneseo and Siena College in Albany. PEEP is a great example of how our department was able to find a creative solution to the impacts of the COVID pandemic. This program was formerly called Onsite and was primarily limited to local colleges and universities, which sent admissions representatives to Ward Melville to evaluate applications on the spot. Since access to our school was limited during the pandemic, we created PEEP as a way to allow our students to continue to get this unique opportunity. Since we no longer required a physical meeting in our school, we're able to add colleges that were beyond our local area, such as Geneseo and Siena. Remaining flexible and resourceful with our programming and curriculum is something we will continue to focus on moving forward. So you'll see that this slide outlines the many additional responsibilities that the guidance staff provides. A few of these are focused on the enhancement and improvement of communication to and from our office. It has been a priority of our department to find effective ways to provide information to students and their parents and guardians. Whether it's through the email platform through Infinite Campus of Messenger 2.0, through the comprehensive Ward Melville Guidance website, or through the use of individual school counselors' Google Classrooms, we are trying to find the most efficient ways to reach our students and families. The next few slides provide information regarding the class of 2022 and how they fared in the college admissions process. I will summarize these statistics at the end of this series of slides. The first slide provides information on where students applied. What you'll see here is the top 20 colleges that the class of 2022 submitted applications to. Next, you will see the total number of applications submitted to SUNY colleges. This slide shows the top 20 most attended colleges for the class of 2022. And last, this slide provides information regarding the Ivy League schools. It shows the total number of the class of 2022 applications by school, followed by the total number of acceptances, the percent accepted for the class of 2022, and finally, the total acceptance rate for that given year for each college. So what are some of the trends that were exposed in evaluating the admission statistics for the class of 2022? The first stat that really stands out, that in a class of 527 students, there were almost 3,900 college applications, not only submitted by the students but processed by our department. The class of 2022 applied to an astounding 409 different colleges and universities. Again, this highlights what I discussed earlier, that the college admissions process is no longer just local or even regional, and our guidance staff needs and does contain or enhance a wide range of knowledge as it pertains to the admissions process. Following the same thread, students attended 148 different colleges. More than a third of our students applied through an early admissions process, a trend that continues to increase seemingly every year. And SUNY schools remain extremely popular with our students. Six out of the top 10 most applied to colleges were SUNY, while seven out of the top 10 most attended schools were SUNY. In sum, the class of 2022 submitted 988 applications to SUNY colleges, and 214 of our students ended up attending one of 20 different SUNY campuses. Additionally, the PEEP program discussed earlier saw 312 different applications with an acceptance rate of over 95%, and that's excluding Suffolk Community College, which has an open enrollment policy. The class of 2022 also exceeded the overall acceptance rate for seven out of the eight Ivy League colleges. And finally, the types of post-secondary institution our students in that single class applied to included art schools, academies of drama, music conservatories, military academies, culinary institutes, institutes of technology, international colleges and universities, and much more. This reoccurring theme of the diversity of where our students apply and attend highlights the need and our department's focus on keeping current with a wide range of different institutes of higher learning. I wanted to leave you with the three core guiding principles of the Ward Melville Guidance Department, some of which you've heard already from our other presenters. First, we are built on relationships. Our focus on establishing relationships with our students and families early and throughout their high school years is paramount to provide the academic, post-secondary, and socio-emotional counseling we've discussed here tonight. Second is collaboration. Our counselors work with families, teachers, administrators, support staff, especially the counseling center, local businesses, college admissions personnel, and outside agencies to provide the level of support necessary for our students to be successful in high school and beyond. And last, our emphasis on helping students and families to find the right fit in terms of their academic and career paths beyond high school is one of our primary goals. I want to thank you for allowing me to present to you tonight, and I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Connolly.
Thank you, Mrs. Keller, Ms. Abadi, Ms. Pullos, Mr. DiTaro, and Mr. Jane, and the entire guidance team. As you've heard this evening, vertically from 6th grade through 12th grade, the Three Village Guidance Department offers a well-developed continuum of services and supports for our students. Foundationally, the work in the elementary schools, which includes lessons designed for time management and study skills, anxiety and emotional regulation, to the junior high schools where counselors provide a plethora of socio-emotional supports and begin a conversation about post-secondary life, to the high school where counseling staff are intimately involved in assisting students with their social, emotional, and academic success, and providing students and families with an opportunity for more intensive post-secondary dialogue. This model creates the framework for students as they move through their secondary schooling and approach graduation. Three Village counselors understand that in order to effectively work with a student on establishing their post-high school plans, a counselor should be well-versed in the socio-emotional wellness of their students. This common thread joins the counseling staff in grades 6 through 12 and gives students the best opportunity to make decisions about post-high school life. I'm extremely proud of our guidance department. As we look to the future, I am confident that the guidance staff is well-equipped for the road ahead. The leadership that is in place at each level is steadfast in their will and desire to support students and families. I am certain that whatever changes occur in the future... I am certain that whatever changes occur in the future, the guidance team will continue to adapt to the ever-changing landscape. I'd like the counselors to stand one more time and be acknowledged. Thank you very much.
So I want to thank Ms. Conley, Mr. Jane, Ms. Dataro, Ms. Pullos, for your leadership with the department over the past several years, and all of our guidance counselors here. We would have not have been able to make it through this crisis without all of the support, love, and concern you showed to the students in our district. You should all be applauded every single day for all the work that you do. It's a tremendous job in these difficult times. You rise above everything every single day and help our kids get through whatever they're experiencing. So kudos to all of you. It's an honor and a pleasure to work with all of you.
And I would just like to add my my thanks and gratitude as well and just tell you, because you probably don't hear it often enough, I have lots of friends in other districts in other states, and sometimes I talk about, oh, you know, my child's guidance counselor helped with this, or we had this presentation, and they're like, what? That's wonderful. That's amazing. And it is amazing. And I think another testament to what a great service you provide is how many of my recently graduated children's friends want to become guidance counselors. So thank you.
And I'd just like to say that as a former principal of Murphy Junior High School, and I know I speak for all of the principals in the district. Without you, I could never have run a building. So I want to tell you thank you, thank you, thank you for everything that you've done for me and for all the other principals and for our kids and parents. Thank you.
All right. Well, we'll go from a good presentation to good news. Sometimes PTA meetings don't necessarily sync up with our meetings, so not everybody will have their good news segment for for each meeting. So we're going to skip over Arrowhead this time around, correct? I actually have Minisakis because Dr. Kerman wasn't able to be here. They had the Scholastic Book Fair at Mini last week. Students enjoyed the opportunity to shop for books and build their personal reading libraries. They raised money for the American Heart Association during the Healthy Heart Challenge. They were the number one school on Long Island raising, wow, raising over $20,000. That's amazing. Student Council is collecting toys for children at Stony Brook Children's Hospital. They participated in the Super Bowl and collected over 2,000 cans of soup and mac and cheese. They collected over $700 in coins for cancer as part of the Great Kindness Challenge. The World Language Department came to visit the sixth graders to tell them all about the languages they could take in junior high school. The guidance department also visited the sixth graders. Students have started their scheduling process as they get ready for 7th grade. Minisaki's student artwork that represents the DEI theme, dreaming about making a difference in the world, is now being displayed in and around our community at local businesses. So that was Minisaki. Mount, do we have this time around? Not this time. Okay.
I have it. I attended.
You have Satake? Okay.
No, I have Mount.
Oh, you have Mount. Sorry. Go. Yes. Thank you.
I went there for you, yes. Before that, I also want to thank all our counselors. So far, I have attended three in-person meetings with Counselor Jelena and Ward Melville. I was very impressed. I thought I know everything by reading documents, but the counselors definitely know more than what I do. And I really like building the relationship because before that, I wouldn't encourage my kids, oh, if you have any issue, go to the counselors. But after those meetings, I feel like, oh, they do know more. They have the experience through all these years. So I really like the work done by the counselors. Okay. Now going back to Mount PDA. So first thing, Sweetheart Dance on February 10th was a big hit. 200 people attended. I was surprised with that. And other than that, there was the Great Kindness Challenge. Kids dressed up. They really like it. And the tables were filled with donations for the food pantry, and the PDA wants to thank the parents to support this kindness donations. And there were more things, but I just want to pick a few that I want to highlight. Transitions for sixth graders, both Mount students and I went to also Satake. They want to thank the Jelena and Murphy students coming to sixth grade, teaching them what about the languages. The sixth grader, I really appreciate the help. Otherwise, they don't know what to experience in junior high. So that was a very well praised. Back to Mount, there was the, oh, there will be an African-American culture celebration on February 28th. That's a great thing for this African-American heritage month. And the last thing highlighted in the PTA meetings, both in Mount and Satake, was the charity sports sponsored by TVTA. And it was, it was so well praised by everyone that's back in person again. And students were excited to see their principals and teachers competing, and they were rooting for them. Thank you for TVTA for organizing this event. And I know the the fund will be raised and sponsor some a scholarship. That was really good.
Thank you. Okay. NASA CAG, Ms. Solomon.
So I don't want to be left out of the kudos for guidance, and I'll just say that my kids' guidance counselor, counselors, you know who you are. And it takes a village. And I think, well, it takes a village. So NASA CAG, NASA CAG has implemented a Disconnect to Reconnect Night, and those nights are going well. And this month, the students will participate in a virtual game night sponsored by the PTA. The February PTA meeting was a great success, very well attended by just about every grade level. The sixth graders had foreign language visits last week as well. And the second graders are going to have a visit from the Ward Melville High School American Sign Language students. And they had a great PS I Love You Week.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to Dr. Liefer Satake.
So for Satake also had the kindness week, and they decorated SAC, and they also collected cans more than 1,000 items. They want to thank the parents for helping with this, and the winning class will have a pizza party. So that was very welcomed by kids. What else? I have a long list. Just picking some few trips and was done by third grade, fourth grade. Oh, International Multicultural Night will be tomorrow. I heard there will be performances coming from the Stony Brook University, and there will be International Dumpling House. So dumplings from different countries. I hope that will be appreciated by people from all over the place. And I guess I have just too many. So, oh, last thing, charity sports. I know Mount has a color of red and Satake has a color of blue. I believe every school will have their colors, and that's a big theme.
That's great. Thank you so much. Okay, I have Jelena's. Kindness Week was a big hit with a spirit week and kindness activities such as kindness grams and door decorating throughout the week. Thank you to the Jelena's PTSA for providing all the students and staff with a T-shirt to celebrate PS I Love You Day. Tuesday, February 7th, the Jelena's administration team met with the sixth grade parents to prepare for their move to the junior high school. The evening was well-attended, and that presentation is available on the Jelena's website if you weren't able to catch it. In addition, the Jelena's guidance counselors went to visit the sixth grade students to talk about their scheduling process. Jelena's 7th grader, Michael Amada, was featured on NBC News for the photo he captured of the rare green comet earlier this month. That photo is also up on the Jelena's social media pages. You should check it out. Congratulations to the Jelena's Science Olympiad team, who took first and fifth place of 22 teams at the Cornell Invitational Tournament. Up next is Regional Tournament, which is being hosted at Murphy Junior High School this year, so best of luck. And Jelena's 9th grader, Anna Zing, along with the Ward Melville Academic Challenges Club, took first place at the Science Bowl competition at Brookhaven National Lab. Anna and her teammates earned an all-expense-paid trip to compete for the national title in Washington, DC. That happens this coming April. So congratulations to all of them. Mrs. Gish, do you, not this time, so we'll get them next time at Murphy. And last but not least, the Academy, Ms. Solomon.
So I didn't even get a chance to do Ward Melville this month. You hit it out of the park. The Academy continues to flourish. There are 49 students currently enrolled, nine of which are from out of district. And the Academy is celebrating its 10th anniversary this year.
Happy anniversary. All right. Moving on to Item 6B now, Dr. Scanlon, Strategic Planning Committee.
So we're in the process of doing the survey. We'll be sending out a reminder to the community about the survey ends on Friday, this Friday at 5:00 PM. So so far, the results are a little bit mixed. We did the students on the 13th. Students pretty much evenly split between Option A, which is keeping our current configuration, and Option B, which is moving the 9th and the 6th grade. Among staff, it's overwhelmingly Option B, moving 6th and 9th grade. Among the community members, it's Option B predominantly. Among parents, it's very close between Option B and Option A. So the reminder will go out. We only had about a 30% response rate among the parents, so we're trying to encourage the parents to please participate in the survey. Your opinion does matter in this situation. We really do want to take everyone's opinion in this matter as we move forward with potential plans for the future.
Thank you. And we'll stay with you for Budget Advisory Committee, please.
So we had our first Budget Advisory Committee meeting on, it seems like a long time ago. There you go. So the next one is tomorrow night. We'll be back in this room with the 40-member committee, roughly, with representation from all the different constituencies in the district. Last presentation was done by Mr. Carlson, an overview of our budgetary process with some examples. Tomorrow night's presentation will be by Dr. Mason, reviewing the special education programs for the district. The next meeting after that will be Ms. Pimentel, our CIO, the Chief Information Officer for the district, will be doing some presentations on our data. And then the following meeting will be Dr. Dubraski, yes, Dr. Dubraski with the secondary principals. And the meeting after that will be Dr. Biscari with the elementary principals. So those are the upcoming meetings for the BAC. Want to add anything, Mr. Carlson?
No, just in, along with those meetings, we'll be filling in some of the other areas of the budget benefits and debt service and those kind of things that aren't a whole lot of discussion, but just more informational of here's the, here's what it is. One thing I would like to mention, though, is, and I'm going to go over this with the Budget Advisory Committee tomorrow night, is the state aid information that the state released. So the state, with the governor's budget proposal, then the state released the individual district projections. And Newsday ran an article, and unfortunately, they did half the story. And they, starting last year, and starting last year, the state included in the individual district runs, as they're called, they included universal pre-K, which means the maximum amount a district could receive if it had a universal pre-kindergarten program, which, by the way, if you have that kind of program, it's not even accounted for in the general fund. It's in the special aid fund, which means it's not part of the budget. But they started adding that amount, what a district could get in that, to the state aid runs. The only reason to do that is to make the aid appear higher than it really is, which is what they did to everybody, but including us. So of our, what looked like, if you just looked at the Newsday article, a $2.4 million increase, it's really closer to an $800,000 increase, 800,000 and change. We'll probably get, when it's finally done, somewhere about a million dollar increase. And most of that increase is in the area of foundation aid. When we say state aid, it's made up of a number of different categories. Foundation aid, transportation aid, building aid, excess cost aid, various aids for special education services. And it's, state aid is just the umbrella term of all the categories added together. The biggest piece of that is foundation aid. So when we hear, if we read articles or in the Newsday or wherever in the news, about fully funding foundation aid, sounds great. Well, without going into a tremendous amount of detail, some districts were getting less than the foundation aid formula said they should get, and some were getting more. We were getting more because of the way foundation aid, it was made up of a bunch of other aid categories some years ago. And then they backed into a formula. So when they say fully fund foundation aid, that doesn't do us anything. What they did this year, as they did last year, was said every district will get a minimum increase of 3% in foundation aid. That's where our $800,000 and change increase comes from. Just to put things in perspective, it's not a knock on any other school district. Good for them. But Brentwood is getting a $79 million increase in foundation aid. Not one-time shot, now annual amount, $79 million increase. William Floyd is getting a $44 million increase. Again, good for them, but that's, those are mind-boggling numbers. We're getting 800,000. So I'll go over that with the BAC tomorrow night.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to Item 6D. This is just an open conversation amongst the board about the ChatGPT. I brought this up because obviously it's everywhere in the news, and this is not to indicate that the administration is not completely on top of it from their end. They are. But I thought for our perspective, it would be really nice to just sort of talk amongst ourselves about the pros and cons. And that's both for students and for staff, because there are definitely pros and cons for students and staff. So for anyone who doesn't know, ChatGPT is, came out the end of November from a company called OpenAI. It's a conversational bot that is responsive to users' questions in ways that allows it to search large databases and create well-formed essays, legal briefs, poetry, computer code, lyrics, pretty much you name it, it can, it can do it. And I think most of us have noodled around with it a little. It's very interesting. If you haven't had a chance, keep trying to get on. Sometimes it's crowded and you can't get on there. But just curious, I open the floor to anybody who has positives or negatives or questions to talk about this. Anybody? Mikhail, you look like you're thinking about something.
Me personally, I don't really see an advantage for it. I mean, obviously, I've tried toying around with it, like putting some random prompts in. It's, I've even tried, I have to admit, I've even tried it with like an English essay prompt, not to actually use it, just to see how it would work. It's not very well-developed, in my opinion. Especially for a lot of students take AP courses. If I were to submit that for an AP course, it wouldn't get me much credit. It's very surface-lined. It's not exploring like depths and, you know, it's just very a broad generality of a tool. And I think if you want it for basics of like, talk about astronomy or talk about the planets, sure, if you have like middle school stuff like that. But I feel like as we get more advanced in our education, there's not much of a need for it. And quite frankly, I feel like it doesn't really help that much. So I don't see a practical use for it, but it's fun.
Did you want to join in on this conversation? Come on up to a microphone, my friend.
My inner nerd is just bursting with joy.
Good. So introduce yourself for those who may not know who you are and why you ran to a microphone.
Sure. My name is Deirdre Rubenstrunk. I'm the Executive Director of Technology. ChatGPT just hits so many different key points for me. I have a corporate background. I am a librarian by training. I am a technologist now in trade. ChatGPT has recently been added by Microsoft to Bing and Edge. And while those don't sound like very big developments because they are hardly used programs, that is the trial that's going to add the AI to the Microsoft Office suite. So now I'm envisioning that I'm no longer going to need to write very extensive Excel formulas in order to produce the data that I'm looking for. I am going to be able to communicate to the AI what I need. And I'm seeing that perhaps somewhere in the next five years, how to use AI could actually end up being a part of our standards. Corporate America is going crazy over this right now, and we are going to have to prepare our students to use this as a tool. We'll be evaluating them based on the input, just like you were saying, and the quality of the results. I'd be curious to see how two different individuals with one prompt would enter informations and ask questions of the AI in order to elicit some really good work. My bigger concerns are in the arts. There is, I'll happily share the plethora of articles that I've been collecting on ChatGPT. I apologize, I can't remember the name of the artist, but there was an AI in which they loaded the biography of an artist. And then they asked the AI to produce a piece of work, and what they produced looked remarkably similar to the real thing. What is beauty if it is machine-generated? How do we feel about music if it is machine-generated? We create a lot of music with machines, but it's machine-assisted. Those are real moral and kind of ethical questions that are going to plague us. And then as far as the academic integrity piece, there's a big difference between can and should. And all of the research out there, and this is my library background speaking to me. I have my library colleagues over there. All of the leading research indicates that the only way that you promote academic integrity amongst students is not with TurnItIn.com and originality reports in Google, but by actually educating them in what integrity is and making that tangible for them. So one of the things that we've been discussing as a department is actually a coordinated campaign, which I imagine to be incredibly interdisciplinary. So I'm turning and looking at Erin Connolly right now. Three Village has integrity. What does it look? at Erin Connolly right now. Three Village has integrity. What does it look like? Three Village has AI academic integrity. There's a reason why AI academic integrity and artificial intelligence start with the same letters. It's serendipitous. So I think it's very exciting. We will not be able to predict how this is going to change our world, but we can control and evaluate how it impacts us in the here and now. And we should put together a group of people to do that. The English Chair at Ward Melville High School, Joanna Catalino, and I will be looking to put together a PLC this spring in order to get a group of professionals together to study ChatGPT, learn more about it, learn about ethical uses of it. So.
I think Mr. Bernhardt at our senior leadership meeting this morning put it best. When the graphing calculators first came out several years ago, everyone was shocked that those would be allowed to be used. Now, you probably couldn't go into math class without seeing a graphic calculator being used. So you hit it right on the head that we have to look at the technology as a tool and something that we need to train staff and students on, proper use of this as we move forward. The future is being used with this and other areas in corporate areas, and we're going to see it. But at the same time, we also have to be careful with the originality of work and what students' integrity will be. I know for a fact that after coming through a doctoral program, and I can attest that Dr. Biscari and Dr. Debruski went through this as well, they're very critical about what you write and what you don't write, and they'll be more than happy to not give you a doctorate if you fail the integrity piece of that process. So you have to be very, very careful. So we don't want to see any of our students going down a pathway that would harm them in their future educational experiences. So I think it's important that as a board, you're discussing this, and we're considering any piece to this with our own policies as we move forward. And I think through your leadership, Deirdre, that you've actually done a great deal of work already in processing this situation as it unfolds.
I appreciate that, Kevin. I'm a millennial. I was told that I was never going to have a calculator in my pocket all the time. Look at me now.
And if I could just add, Mrs. Rubenschrunk, her enthusiasm in all of this has been really, it's been entertaining and educating at the same time. So she sends me emails at various times throughout the day, or gives me a call to let me know of what prompt she is putting in and what impact that's having. But I think what I take most out of our conversations is to not panic, right? This is like an exploration time. We've seen some districts that have tried to ban it right off, right off the bat, and that has not been successful. So I think we're taking the right approach in the understanding aspect and really being purposeful in exploring how we can utilize this as a teaching tool and how we need to adapt, because it's something that's going to be around.
One of the really great analogies that I heard recently about predicting the impact that an innovation will have, two really great analogies. The bicycle and the women's suffragettes movement. Gutenberg and the printing press and the rise of the nation-state. At the time that the bicycle was invented, no one ever could have imagined how instrumental it would be in women gaining the right to vote. At the time the printing press was invented, no one could have imagined that it was going to revolutionize political systems. And yet, here we are.
I want to echo the excitement. I think this will change how we efficiently work. We probably spend a lot of time doing things that can be replaced by the machine, and I think the machine is catching up really quickly. So I hope our students can take advantage of the technology. I was brainstorming with a few juniors and seniors. At the beginning, they all tried, and they found the limitation of the machine, just like a MacU. And then we thought, there is one way, the machine actually can help some student. I know you probably all know procrastination, and my kids have it, I have it too. Using the ChatGPT, you have the machine generate something, and you look at, oh, I can do better. Immediately, you can maybe put it into work. So I hope this can be some positive uses for this new tool.
Absolutely. I agree. And I'm so happy to hear that my feelings are kind of echoed that this is, it is a brave new world, but it's a good thing, right? We can't run away afraid. I think there are definitely great uses in the classroom. I think there's great uses for teachers. I really do. You know, just to mitigate some of that, you know, time-consuming minutia that is difficult. So I hope we continue the conversation. Talk to your kids about it. They already probably know a lot more than we do. And we keep talking. We'll keep talking about it. So thank you. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you for letting me join the conversation.
Always happy to have you.
I don't think you could keep me out of this one.
Always happy to have you. Thanks for joining. All right, we're going to move on to 7A. May I have a motion to approve our consent agenda? Second? Okay, so we, yes, yes, we do. 7B, Ms. Drummond?
It's just a minute from the January 25th Board of Ed meeting.
Okay, thank you. And 7C, approval of the 2023-24 calendar. Dr. Scanlon.
So as we've been discussing for a couple of months now about the calendar for next year, looking at this from multiple perspectives from the Calendar Committee, the DEI Committee, Eastern Suffolk Bosse has taken a lead in recognizing different cultures and religious groups in the region here. And we are following suit moving forward. So our calendar next year will be 180 school days with four conference days. The teachers and staff will be in on the 30th and 31st for the Conference Day and the Professional Development Day. First day of school will be September 5th, which is the day after Labor Day. We have off for Columbus Day or Indigenous Peoples' Day in October. In November, the students are off for Election Day. That's a Professional Development Day for staff. Veterans Day Observance is on the Friday, the 10th. Thanksgiving, we will be off on the Wednesday for Thanksgiving, as has been put in place for several years. Most of the community is very appreciative of that. Our attendance for Monday and Tuesday is usually way down in the tank because of people leaving early for Thanksgiving. December, December 8th is report cards for elementary and the Secondary Conference Day as well. December break, the first winter break, will go from the Saturday, the 23rd, through January 2nd. We'll be taking one extended day on that vacation beyond what Eastern Suffolk Bosse is doing. Also in January is Martin Luther King Day on the 15th. February, February break will be the 19th through the 23rd. In March, Good Friday will be observed on the 29th. Easter falls on the 31st, and I will have off Easter Monday. Eid will be observed on April 10th of this year. That is in recognition of the groups in our community that observe that holiday. Passover falls between the 22nd and 26th. And in May, there will be a four-day Memorial Day weekend with the 24th included in there, unless we wind up with four snow days. But judging by the weather this year, if we wind up with more of this weather where it feels like it's April and it's February, we'll see how that goes. Next year's calendar in June, Juneteenth is observed on the Wednesday. The Regents' exams are beginning on the 14th. For the first time ever, they're starting on a Friday. But that is because the 17th, which is the end of Ramadan and Eid, at that point, the state of New York, half the districts are observing and half are not. So there'll be no Regents' exams on that day. It will be an Elementary School Day, but it'll be a makeup day for students in the district. The 24th, 25th, and 26th are half-days for the elementary schools. Those are testing days on the calendar. Next year's graduation ceremony, so if you have a student that's graduating in 2024, graduation will be on June 30th. We will have to have a special ceremony in the event that we have rain for any of our military students or students going to the academies, because boot camp starts on July 1st for those students. So we're all hoping that it doesn't rain on that day. We had that same situation a few years ago. So we will, as we have always done, place all of the holidays that exist in the community on the school calendar. So that includes Lunar New Year, Diwali, Eid, even the Greek Orthodox holidays as well. So all those are represented. Our staff is already fully aware that on those holidays, that if students have work, they are exempt for those holidays and don't have to do the work. Just to remind you that Yom Kippur is on the weekend this, I'm sorry, Rosh Hashanah is on the weekend, so it's not observed on the calendar this year, but it is observed on the 25th of September. The issue, though, as we move forward with this, we're trying to build the days into the calendar. It's not so much next year, and perhaps not even the year after, but by '25, '26, all those holidays I just mentioned all fall during the week. So we're building in the days in the calendar that we'll be prepared in the event that we're moving forward this. The state may come out with some guidance on this, but having off for some of these holidays, there's a downstate thing. And anyone that understands downstate and upstate, anything north of Long Island in most, Long Island's eyes is upstate. So if you cross the Throggs Nick Bridge, you're in upstate New York. But really, when you go probably about Putnam and Dutchess Counties north, they do not observe any religious holidays or February break. They have a completely secular calendar, not involving anyone, any religious group, mostly because of the stuff we're not getting on the downstate, snow. They're really not doing a lot of those holidays, because they would be going to school probably through July, given the snowstorms that they have up there. So the February break is a downstate piece. So not saying that that would be considered to come off the calendar in the future. That's why building these holidays is very important. Other piece that we mentioned at the last meeting, the state of New York cannot, does not allow us to count any school days prior to September 1st at our 990 hours at the secondary level, the 900 hours in the elementary level. We still go to school in New York State by a farmer's calendar, which is very bizarre. So in other states, they start as early as mid-August, and those dates count into their hours and days, but not in New York. So we're not permitted to have that by regulation. So we'd all love to have that. And there are districts on Long Island that do start school days prior to Labor Day and prior to September 1st, but none of the hours in those days count towards the instructional days required on the regulation for the state. So we are bound by that. So the calendar tonight is on the agenda for board approval, and this will be posted tomorrow on the district website. It's, no, it's 180 right now. And then on the side here, you see the 184 at the top.
Thank you very much. Okay, for items D and E, we'll go to Mr. Carlson, please.
We have one donation. It's a flute donated by Mrs. Lois Bauer. And we, that's the donations. Item E is Health and Welfare Services contracts with two districts, Smithtown and Uniondale. This is for students that live in Three Village and attend private schools located in those districts.
Thank you. For items F through H, we'll go to Dr. Biscari, please.
So F, the board previously approved of our professional learning plan, and we submitted it to the State Education Department, and they gave us some wonderful feedback, of which we had to make some revisions to maintain our CTLE sponsorship. So this is the revised plan.
Thank you. And do you have GNH also, or those are mine, sorry? Recommendations of the Committee on Special Education Subcommittee and 504 Accommodation Plan Meetings of November as dated, and recommendations of the Committee on Preschool Special Education Meetings as dated. Moving on for items I through L, Dr. Debruski, please.
Yes. First personnel, we are still at the time of the year where our retirements are coming in. So I would like to recognize and congratulate the following personnel on their decision to retire. First is Angela Campo, speech teacher, 21 years in Three Village. Mary Ann Casio, teaching assistant, 28 years in Three Village. Jackie Mastonia, paraprofessional, 28 years in Three Village. Suzanne Marnick, a nurse, 24 years in Three Village. And Dawn Severino, elementary teacher, 20 years in Three Village. So congratulations to all of them. In addition, we have several resignations that include a teacher sub and four TAs. We have an appointment of a new teaching assistant, appointment of junior high school and high school coaches, SAT prep classes, supervision for Science Olympiad tournaments, and professional fees for people who put in for professional development courses. For non-instructional, we have one non-instructional substitute resignation, two unpaid leaves for childcare workers, appointments to non-instructional positions such as one food service worker, two special education aides, and one lunch monitor, appointment to non-instructional positions such as one clerical upgrade, one lunch monitor, and one additional childcare worker, and appointment of three non-instructional substitute positions as well as a lifeguard. Okay, for K, for your consideration is the memorandum of agreement between Three Village and the UPSCU Registered Nurses Association. That contract is finally done and on your desk for approval. That contract extends from 7/1/21 to 6/30/25. L is the approval of the stipulation of settlement for the employee that we discussed in exec session and as identified in confidential Schedule A.
Thank you very much. All right, all in favor of all of the items in the consent agenda? Should there be no discussion? Questions? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item 8A would be our public comments. Do we have any in person? I know we have one to read aloud. Any in person?
No in person, just the one I gave you earlier.
Okay, perfect. So we'll read this aloud. This is from Karen, roughly. "Good evening. I would like to inquire if the Board of Education has discussed making the do-no-harm policy permanent. I know this policy was temporarily put in place during COVID, but I would like the Board to consider making this policy permanent going forward. Under a do-no-harm policy, students will still prepare and sit for the Regents' exams. The Regents' exams will still continue to be a graduation requirement and will still be listed on every student's high school transcript, but under this policy, the Regents' grades will only factor into a student's class grade and GPA if it helps the student. It removes the added stressor of lowering the class grade, which is a culmination of 10 months of multiple tests, quizzes, projects, homework, and classwork based on a single day's performance. For test anxiety students and students with special needs, this policy can make the difference between a failing test grade and the ability to truly demonstrate what they have learned over the course of the year. Per a memo from the New York State Education Department dated September 2016, the New York State Education Department does not require or recommend that schools use Regents' examination grades as part of the calculation of the student's final average. Permanently creating a do-no-harm policy for Regents' exams would be beneficial to students who need it and would do no harm for those who do not. It brings an equity in education we all strive for. Thank you for your consideration." Okay. And if there are no other questions, concerns, topics to be raised, may we have a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry. Beg your pardon. We're going to go back into executive session. So we have a motion to return to executive session and finish our work from earlier. Second, all in favor? Okay, we are adjourned for executive session. Thank you, everybody, and congratulations again to our Counseling Department.